Good evening, everybody. We're going to call our meeting to order. We'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record show I feel like that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Contreras.
The Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll all rise and join us, is going to be led by Deputy Mayor Franklin tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum during the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on the Agenda cover sheet. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you may ask one of the sheriff's deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. So with that, to speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, if you'll fill out a speaker slip, but then number the item that you want to speak on and give it to our city clerk secretary, and speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers. If you'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip, mark Oral Communication, indicate the topic you wish to speak on, and submit your slip to the clerk secretary. Please limit your comments to issues that are within the jurisdiction of the city council. Please note that the city council is prohibited from discussing an item that is not on the agenda or from answering questions posed by speakers. Oral communication takes place at the end of the meeting, and this is done to ensure that the business items that individuals have come to hear and/or speak on are addressed first. So with that, we'll have approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Actually, there's no closed session this evening, so our city attorney won't need to address that. The following recommendations are on the consent calendar, will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And tonight, we have eight, eight different items, C1 through C8. And I have, I have one item pulled by the public, which is item C7. And do I have anything else? Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Rigby.
Madam Mayor and city clerk, I would like to note that I will be recusing myself from voting on C8 due to a conflict of interest.
Okay. Councilmember Contreras.
I would like to pull C1, please.
Okay. With that, we will vote on the balance of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And so with that, we will go to C1. Councilmember Contreras, do you need a report?
You know what? I just wanted to highlight something. In going through our vendors and what we're paying out, taking a look at our top 20 vendors, number eight is San Diego Gas &amp; Electric. Now, for a month's time, what we have paid to San Diego Gas &amp; Electric is $98,638.86. Now, the ninth top vendor is Vista Irrigation District. We've paid, in a month's time, $61,964.87. The reason that I wanted to pull this is that it just kind of sticks out, right? How much we're paying in electricity. Now, water is, as of now, not really a renewable resource, and yet, we're paying so much less for something that is pretty scarce. Energy is a renewable resource, and for us to be better stewards of the public's money, I think we should really explore going towards more renewables and see if there's any investment vehicles, like community choice energy, where part of what we're paying can go into this pot of money for us to start looking at future investments to possibly lower the cost that we pay on a monthly basis for energy. And so I just wanted to pull this item, just to highlight how much we are paying San Diego Gas &amp; Electric, just to light our facilities and our streetlights.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to make a motion to approve that item?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve this item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have item and a second, please. Cast your votes. That item passes unanimously. The second item that was pulled was item C7, completion of the city skate parks. And I have, do you want me to hear the speaker first, or do we need a report? Marty Martinez? Is Marty here? You want to speak?
Yeah.
Well, come up. You have three minutes.
My name is Marty Martinez. I am here to speak on section C... It's a skate park one.
C7, completion of the skate parks.
Yeah, completion of the skate parks. So I'm basically here to talk about, I represent the Paint Booth 760. We're on Instagram. What we are is a nonprofit that focuses on preserving the integrity of the music community and art community here in North County, San Diego, and we're based here in Vista. We started throwing shows inside of an auto body shop in an alley where we had an up to, it's my grandpa's auto body shop, and so we had permission from him. What we transformed the venue into, a paint booth into an, literally into an Art Alley Festival. And we had up to 250 people occupying the space at one point. Obviously, there were restrictions in terms of fire code violations and things like that. And so what I am here to do and talk about is making sure that we have the special permits and the support of the city to be able to host events at the two skate parks located in that area off of South Santa Fe and located right behind the La Mahi Kana Market and the Metzicano Tires. So I actually have the approval and the letter sent from the owner of La Mahi Kana Market discussing the benefits of having music located in the alley. We want to have it in proper locations such as the skate parks, and we want to use that area as a positive activation of space. There tends to be a lot of, I grew up in the neighborhood. I grew up in Vista my whole life, graduated from Rancho Buena Vista, very familiar with the culture. And La Mahi Kana Market tends to be a lot of, you know, bad behavior, you know, drugs and things like that. And so what we want to do is provide, you know, have the support of not only the city but also other businesses in order to build the community in a positive light. And, yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you.
How much more time do I have?
When the light turns yellow.
Oh, okay. All right, cool.
Actually, when it turns red.
When it turns red, great. All right. All of you young people here, this is an all ages venue?
No, you have to talk to us up here. You're here to talk to us.
So we're an all ages venue. Our Instagram is thepaintbooth760. You can follow us. We've been throwing shows for the past seven months, and we've had 1,400 followers. Think of 1,400 people literally knowing about your events. We have bands that, we have international bands who have come and played, from TJ, from Europe. We have bands from Chicago coming to play. A lot of bands finish their tours in San Diego since there's such, such a huge distance gap between downtown San Diego and LA and Orange County. And not only that, but we're doing the music for Downtown Art Alley Festival, so.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. I would look for a motion.
I'll move that we approve C7.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes on that. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're moving on. We have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the proposal to amend Chapter 18.52 of the Development Code regarding regulations for freeway-oriented pole signs. So the public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to our Development Code for freeway-oriented pole signs. The city council adopted goals in March of last year, which included goal number four, to continue to decrease blight and improve the city's image. That goal, in terms of evaluating that goal, the city looked at opportunities along the freeway corridor to enhance aesthetics within the corridor. As part of that analysis, we looked at freeway-oriented pole signs to determine if there were opportunities for numerous new signs, which there are. That with the passage of Proposition Z and the potential for the establishment of cannabis dispensaries along that freeway corridor. The staff initiated a proposal to change the ability to put up freeway-oriented pole signs, which is before you this evening. The staff is proposing an amendment to the sign code, specifically Chapter 1852 of the code, which addresses signs on private property. The amendment would affect the opportunity for new pole signs within the freeway-oriented districts that are shown in the maps in your staff report, and it would also remove some properties that were rezoned last year. This is the map of the freeway-oriented districts that are located along the 78 corridor. This is what's defined in our Development Code as the areas that are eligible for freeway-oriented pole signs currently. Coincidentally, as I mentioned, there's also numerous locations within this corridor that are eligible locations for cannabis dispensaries under Prop C. The current regulations allow a freeway-oriented pole sign to be installed in any of the eligible properties with an administrative sign permit. The pole signs can be up to 30 feet high or 15 feet above the freeway grade elevation, whichever is greater, not to exceed 45 feet above the ground level. The signs can have a sign area of up to 150 square feet and must be at least 150 feet away from other freeway-oriented signs. The proposed amendment would allow the same types of pole signs for only two specific land use types. Those are new motor vehicle dealerships and hotels. These are both land uses that generate significant revenue for the city, and so staff felt that we were obliged to maintain their opportunity for pole signs. The sign height and square footage allowances for these uses would remain the same. There's also an amendment to map number five within your packet, which removes 19 single-family homes that were rezoned to R1B last year, as I mentioned earlier. If you could forward the slide for me. This is the map number five that shows the location of the rezoned properties off of Thibodeau Road that were formerly part of the freeway-oriented pole sign district. These are being removed as part of the amendment this evening. And with that, staff is recommending that the council introduce and adopt an ordinance amending the Development Code pertaining to freeway-oriented pole signs, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any questions? I don't have any. Do you have some speakers? Oh. Councilmember Contreras, sorry.
Yes, so I just want to kind of illustrate a little bit more beyond what we just heard as to why the staff recommendation is a good one. You know, one thing that we don't want to have in our city is Las Vegas-style, here we are, here's a giant, you know, cannabis leaf. That's just not the direction that we want our city to go in. And if we don't move forward with adopting this amendment here, then that is a possibility. And so that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I do have a question, just so we can illustrate for the public. So say, I'm getting, I have a new business, and I want to put a sign in, and I don't have an existing pole sign. What are my options to be able to advertise my business to the public? So what kind of sign can I have?
After this amendment?
Yes.
You'd be able to have a wall sign on your building, along any street frontage that would advertise the business. You could have a monument sign, which can be a six-foot-high, a 10-foot-wide sign at your driveway or at your street frontage. And you can have temporary banners for certain special events. That's what's straight allowed by the code. You can also do what's called a comprehensive sign program, where you have a more unified sign designed throughout your site. But it would be limited to the monument and wall signage that I mentioned.
So with the addition of this, it wouldn't really impede a business's ability to show who they are from far away, right, to clients or anything like that?
Only change it would be is that they wouldn't be able to put up a 30-foot-high pole sign in the front of their property.
Okay. And the ones that exist are already grandfathered in?
That's correct.
If they were permitted to begin with?
Correct. If they were permitted to begin with, they are allowed to remain until they either are removed or fall down. They can be refaced, so if one of these dispensaries does locate in a location that has an existing pole sign, they can reface the sign. There's no need for a permit, so there is still some potential for that, but it would eliminate the potential for a new sign.
Okay. And our code doesn't allow for flashing signs anyways, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I would just add to that, that if you haven't really paid attention to Vista as you drive down 78, it is a much more scenic drive than some of our neighbors because we've worked very hard to keep it that way. This has been an issue we've talked about in the past, and I appreciate the staff and their foresight to bring this item forward. And so I would offer a motion to adopt the resolution proposed.
And close the public hearing. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just agree with my colleagues, and I want to thank staff for bringing this before us. I appreciate the time and energy and effort and research that went into this amendment. So thank you for that, and I will second the motion.
Did you second that?
I did.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so I have one, two, I have four public speakers this evening, so we'll start with those. We'll start with Samuel Hershey, followed by Joshua Tienda.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I also just wanted to thank you for the City of Vista. I've contacted the City of Vista about four or five times over the last five years on different issues, from uneven sidewalks that my son couldn't easily traverse on, to landscaping that wasn't being done, although it was reported that it was being done. And in every case, the City of Vista has responded quickly and helpfully and gotten things done. Even today, I noticed, oh, I was going to remember the name of the company, but there was the company out, the new company out doing the landscaping on South Melrose, and it just looks terrific. So anyway, I hope you can help with this next item, which is, as I was just handed, I'm glad to see that you have a municipal code against distribution of handbills when it's requested not to be distributed. I have contacted the San Diego Union Tribune since 2009, 34 different times, to not deliver these packages, because of the very reason that you have in your ordinance. It communicates that residents are not at home, and it invites folks to check that opportunity out. Well, we were away in January. We came back from Dallas, Texas, and there was another one in my driveway. I've been promised by the San Diego Union Tribune twice that they would not even deliver to our entire block. One time, someone supposedly got fired because it got delivered. I think they use services that are just minimum wage, and they drive through about 3:00 in the morning and just wing these papers left and right. And so to have a sign on your property for post no handbills isn't going to work because they can't see it. I've provided for you some examples from the City of San Francisco and from, I believe it's just the state of New York, where in one case, and I think you would like this, first offense, there's a $250 fine that the city gets. New York City, I believe it's a $300 fine plus 10 hours of community service. Think how much community service you could have gotten out of the Union Tribune since 2009. So I would ask that you amend the current code to include that, as well as that whoever the distributor of the material is, that they may contacting them for not getting the material user-friendly. For instance, on this paper, it says right at the top that if you don't want to receive it, here's a phone number to call. You know what happens when you call that phone number? You get a weird phone signal that it's not an accurate phone number. On one of the papers that I gave you, I sent, it shows that there's a website for one of the newspapers where you could easily record you're not wanting to have that. So those three additions to this code could put some teeth into it and help us to not get those.
Thank you, sir. And I happen to agree with you. I get tired of getting them in my driveway, too. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. I know we can't respond to it because it was not agendized, so we can talk offline. But I did want to ask the city manager if we can agendize this item, because Mr. Hershey is not the only complainant that we've had on this issue. We get a lot of complaints on this, and we need to address it a little bit more aggressively, I think, than we do. So if you could please agendize this item for us?
I third all of that.
Thank you.
I've personally spoken to the publisher, the Union Tribune, about this, and he gave me a bunch of false promises, and I'm very frustrated and angry with him about it, too.
Okay. Here are these documents on the City of San Francisco. Can I turn them in?
I think we got them all already.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joshua Tienda. He'll be followed by Nikki Leeds.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmen. I noticed that, I, no, thankful, I got a notice that the survey for the Main Street and Indiana gazebo, the air that corner was sent, no, and I just wanted to give my opinion on the matter, no, vocally. When the art festival, no, not the art, but the Vista Strawberry Festival comes, we have a lot of street vendors with food, with food and stuff, and there's not a lot of place to sit down and have a meal with shade. So all the people, including myself, like to cram ourselves in that area of the, because it's, there's a lot of shade. And I think if something will be there, they should have canopies that are artistic in nature, that would blend in with the rest of the city art, art, art walk, but have something there that will, that will provide shade for the, for the public so when, when the heat is, like when these, when the Vista Strawberry Festival, they have somewhere to sit down and eat without having to be beaten by, on, on the sun, no. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Good comments. Nikki Leeds, followed by Merrill Leeds.
I'm going to show you a video. I want to introduce you to the young lady you're going to be seeing. Her name is Greta. She's fabulous.
Some people say that I should study, become a climate scientist, so that I can solve the climate crisis. But the climate crisis has already been solved. We already have all the facts and solutions. All we have to do is to wake up and change. And why should I be studying for a future that soon will be no more, when no one is doing anything whatsoever to save that future? And what is the point of learning facts within the school system, when the most important facts, given by the fine science of that same school system, clearly means nothing to our politicians and our society? Some people say that Sweden is just a small country, and that it doesn't matter what we do. But I think that if a few children can get headlines all over the world just by not coming to school for a few weeks, imagine what we could all do together if we wanted to. Now, we're almost at the end of my talk. And this is where people usually, people usually start talking about hope, solar panels, wind power, circular economy, and so on. But I'm not going to do that. We've had 30 years of pep talking and selling positive ideas, and I'm sorry, but it doesn't work. Because if we would have, the emissions would have gone down by now. They haven't. And yes, we do need hope. Of course, we do. But the one thing we need more than hope is action. Once we start to act, hope is everywhere. So instead of looking for hope, look for action. Then, and only then, hope will come. Today, we use 100 million barrels of oil every single day. There are no politics to change that. There are no rules to keep that oil in the ground. So we can't save the world by playing by the rules, because the rules have to be changed. Everything needs to change, and it has to start today. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta said it all. Thank you. Thank you. Merrill Leeds.
Good evening, Council. Madam Mayor, my name is Merrill Leeds, and I would like to address the most urgent long-term safety issue that we face today, climate change. Per the most recent 2018 IPCC report, "Every extra bit of warming matters, especially since warming of 1.5 degrees or higher increases the risk associated with long-lasting or irreversible changes, such as the loss of some ecosystems," unquote. Currently, the planet has warmed by 1 degree Celsius, and the effects can already be seen in millions of deaths from heat waves, infectious disease, and extreme weather events, as well as a refugee crisis of horrific proportions, all at a cost of trillions of dollars annually. The last time Earth experienced similar CO2 concentration rates, humans didn't exist. Simply put, gradualism will not save us. So with the greatest of urgency, I would like to request that the City of Vista enact a resolution declaring a climate emergency. In so doing, our community would be joining a growing number of cities throughout the world in taking the critical step of defining our unified commitment to act upon the most important issue of our time. Cities are taking this audacious initiative for several reasons. First and foremost, such a declaration sends a resounding SOS that we are united in our commitment to directing our resources toward the singular purpose of restoring a safe climate for our world and making a rapid transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy. Additionally, our climate emergency statement would serve as a declaration of energy independence, a framework for implementing a rapid transformation to 100% renewable community choice energy, clean public clean public transportation, regenerative agriculture, ecosystem restoration, and climate justice, all of which could be incorporated into an updated and supercharged climate action plan. So let us look at this squarely in the face. Let's show our community and the world what happens when America's climatic wonderland enters emergency mode and is ready, willing, and able to take the bold challenge of transforming our city into a sustainable, inviting model of livability while strengthening climate resilience. As Greta succinctly states in her moving TED Talk, everything needs to change, and it has to start today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And with that, that's the end of our speakers. So I will go with that, I will go to remarks, and I will start with Councilmember Contreras.
I just wanted to share, I was at the State of the County last week, and we have a lot of issues with homelessness, with affordability when it comes to a place to stay, food insecurity, mental health, the climate crisis. And I was really relieved to hear Diane Jacob go through exactly what the county wants to tackle. And it was really a relief to hear that she thinks we should all start moving towards community choice energy and really taking seriously a discussion on community choice energy, community choice aggregation, whatever you want to call it. But to really, not only to put competition on the market against SDGNE, but to get to, to actually moving forward with solutions that have worked in other cities. So I look forward to continuing to hear more from the County Board of Supervisors and see what direction they're going to be taking. But I just think that it's, it would be a really good discussion for us to take up and see if this is a viable situation for our city in a path that we should go on, like so many other cities around us are already having those conversations. So I just want to make sure that we don't get left out. Other than that, I will be heading up to Sacramento in March, and so I'll tell a little bit more about that in our next meeting. But thank you, everybody, for coming, and if you have any questions and you want to speak directly, one-on-one, I do have office hours every Tuesday that the Civic Center is open from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
All right. Thank everybody for showing up. High school kids, you picked a good meeting to come to tonight, awesome for you. I also want to thank our community members for speaking up about things that are important to them and bringing matters to light that our council can definitely review and figure out what the best plan of attack is. I wanted to mention that on the 30th of January, I attended with about, gosh, I want to say about 12 deputy sheriffs and about 10 firefighters from the city, the Tunnel of Kindness at Bobbi elementary school. And it was great, all the little kids show up, we get to high-five them and start off their day pretty awesome. And it was one of the highlights of my month, just high-fiving a bunch of kids, letting them know that they matter, because they do. And even though you guys aren't in elementary school, you matter, and if you need some high-fives, we're all here, we got unlimited high-fives for you. So anyways, that was awesome. I do want to thank our fire department and our sheriff's department for showing up. A lot of times, they see you guys on their worst day, and it was kind of awesome for them to see you guys on their best day as community partners. So thank you guys so much for taking the time to be there for our community. Additionally, it is a lady by the name of Kathy Woods' birthday tonight. She attends every single council meeting with her lovely husband, so Kathy Woods, happy birthday to you. That's all I got.
I would second that happy birthday to Kathy Woods.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Kathy, happy birthday. And again, I want to say thank you to everybody who came out. It's important that we see you, it's important that we hear from you, it's important that you share with us what your ideas and your visions are, as well as all of your concerns. And staff, always thank you very much for what you do for us and for our community. Thank you.
I'll second all of that. So happy birthday, Kathy. Okay, I have some announcements here. The library's annual Love Your Heart event takes place this Thursday, Valentine's Day. You can get a free blood pressure screening at the Vista Library anytime between 10:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. You can continue to celebrate Valentine's Day on February 16th at the Moonlight Amphitheatre's indoor venue, Club M, with jazz singer Spencer Day. The Look of Love concert includes dinner, and ticket information is available online at moonlightstage.com. The city is exploring different uses for the downtown public space at the corner of Main Street in South Indiana, and is reaching out to the public for input on the three proposed design options. Please take the online community survey to select your top option. More option, more information and a link to the survey are available at cityofvista.com/mainstreetgazebo. And that's what Joshua Tienda was talking about when he was talking about the shade coverings. The Wave Water Park is hiring for the 2019 summer season, and this is a great opportunity for part-time work with flexible hours, competitive pay, and a fun outdoor work environment. So check online at thewawaterpark.com to learn about the hiring process. With that, I will see if our city manager has any announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of them. One is due to SDGNE maintenance work, the traffic signal at South Melrose and Longhorn will be on a red flash on Saturday, February 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., so it's due to maintenance. The next item is in observance of President's Holiday, the city offices and the library will be closed on Monday, February 18th. Trash collection, though, will be on the same schedule, there is no delay there. And the last one is, we've had a lot of rain, we're going to continue to get rain in the forecast, there is going to be more potholes that occur in and around the city, so we encourage residents to report those. There's three different ways that you can report them to the city. One is, we have an Access Vista app on the phone, which we would highly encourage residents to use. The other is, you can report them on the website, which is cityofvista.com, and you can go to the column that says "Report a Problem." And then the other is via telephone, which the telephone number is 760-639-6177.
And if you don't have the Access Vista app, it's really easy, and you can take pictures with it and send them in and report graffiti or anything that you see, including potholes. So, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm so sorry, the city manager reminded me, today is February the 12th, and you talk about President's Day, today is the birthday of Abraham Lincoln, who was our 16th president. And I just think it's worth noting, today is Abraham Lincoln's birthday. When I was a kid, that was the holiday, it was Washington's birthday and Lincoln's birthday. We didn't have President's Day when I was your age. So it's always worth noting for me every year.
Honest Abe, right? Okay. Oh, yes, our city attorney.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
How about our city clerk, Kathy? Claire, nothing from you either? Okay. And with that, we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting to honor the memory of Diane Eckert, who passed away on December 16th. Diane was a longtime Vista resident who was active in the Vista Chamber of Commerce, the Boys and Girls Club of Vista, the Vista Historical Museum and Society, and the Vista Garden Club and other local organizations. So we're going to adjourn tonight in her honor. So with that, we are adjourned at 6:10. Yeah, you guys, thank you.